Okay, it being after six o'clock. We do not have a quorum this evening, however, we do not have action items other than approving the minutes from our October meeting. So I will call to order the meeting and we will move forward with our presentations this evening. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And again, as we always do, I welcome the people who were able to join us this evening and we will do introductions. I can just do the introductions. I'm Beck Ashby and I'm a planning commissioner and Chair of the Planning Commission. Staff we have here this evening is Jim Fisk, who is our long-term planner, and we have Nick Bond, the Community Development Director, and we have Paul Fontenot, who is an intern within the Community Development Department. Online, we have Jill Morrison, who is a planning commissioner, and she does not have camera capabilities, but Stephanie Bailey is also online. So with that, we have no one in the audience, we have no one in person here. So I would ask, Paul, do we have anyone online? Any guests?
No members of the public are attending remotely.
Okay, because this is a time when we would normally take audience comments or any testimony the public would like to give us. Having no one online and no one in the building, we will close the audience comments section. And as we mentioned earlier, we do not have a quorum, so we're unable to approve the minutes from the October meeting. We will do that when we meet again in January. So we'll just go right on down and Nick, I believe this is you. This is the presentation of the 2023 Code Amendment Docket, or is it Jim?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take that.
Thank you.
Jim Fisk, City of Port Orchard. Municipal Code 20.06 outlines the procedure for suggesting code amendments. This process allows members of the public, City Council, DCD, and other stakeholders to propose amendments to the municipal code. DCT compiled the list of code amendments to resolve discrepancies, provide clarity, and create consistency with state law. This list has historically been referred to as the housekeeping ordinance. Additionally, this year, an amendment was proposed by a resident of Port Orchard. After compiling the list of proposed amendments received through September 30th, DCD presented the list of suggested amendments to the Land Use Committee. The Land Use Committee recommended that the City Council proceed with items one through eight on the docket included in your packet tonight. The Land Use Committee did not recommend pursuing items nine and 10 on the docket as noted by strike through. After the Land Use Committee, DCD staff recognized that the McCormick Village Overlay District omitted a fourplex building type, and we included a proposed amendment to create that building type in the McCormick Village Overlay District. At the November 14th City Council meeting, council adopted the docket and directed staff to incorporate items one through eight into the ongoing work related to the city's comprehensive plan periodic update. The City Council directed staff to immediately begin to work on the McCormick Village Overlay District fourplex building type amendment independent of items one through eight. Tonight, we are providing the docket to the Planning Commission for your information and to be aware of these amendments as we begin work in 2024.
You mentioned one through eight and that the Land Use Committee had you strike 10, nine and 10?
Correct, nine and 10.
And you're gonna go to work immediately on 13?
Correct.
What's happening to 11 and 12?
Let me pull up my packet here. I may have actually omitted that and I forgot that nine and 10 came in between before 11 and 12. So we will begin work on everything what struck through. Anything that's not struck through, we will begin work on, with the exception of McCormick Village Overlay District. We'll begin work on that immediately. The rest of it will be rolled into the 2024 cycle as part of the comp plan update.
Are there any questions or comments by Planning Commission members?
I have none.
I'll, I'll ask a question. Can, can you expand on the change in item three, please? Industrial space related to commercial space?
That item, I don't want to do it from memory, so let me pull up the, the docket here. That item, I believe is related to the design standards. Let me make sure. Item three, item three you said? Yes. So our, the previous version of our code had a zoning district called Employment Industrial Office. That zone no longer exists. So this is merely just clarifying that that district would, would now be light industrial in our current zoning code. So there's really no change except that we're changing the designation to be the new designation.
It's a form, it's a form of housekeeping.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So as I understand it, this will be coming back to us over the course of the next year in our work plan?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Moving down the agenda, we have the presentation on the McCormick Village Overlay District fourplex building type. And Jim, that's got your name on it also.
In 2021, the city adopted the McCormick Village Overlay District to implement the McCormick Village Subarea Plan. These regulations are in the municipal code. They're sections 20.38.200 through 20.38.280. These, these provide the development regulations applicable to the neighborhood core of the subarea. Part of the regulations specify the types of buildings that may be constructed in the overlay district and provides design requirements for each building type. The fourplex building type was omitted from the McCormick Village Overlay District, but it is a, another tool that can be used to provide more housing options in the McCormick Village. After receiving direction from City Council, we staff developed draft regulations to create a fourplex building type. We also coordinated with the McCormick Village developer to ensure that the regulations fit both the city's needs and the developers' needs. We provided that draft in October to the Planning Commission. And then we've, tonight in your packet included those same, that same draft for your review. Surprisingly though, the developer suggested additional code amendments related to design standards and architectural variety. We recognize the, the reliance on different code sections in the municipal code for design standards and variety requirements could be potentially confusing to users. To clarify the regulations, staff drafted residential design standards based on the existing standards in 20.139 with some minute differences and, and recognizing that buildings such as the proposed fourplex could be used to meet architectural variety standards. There's no action required tonight by the Planning Commission, but staff would like to schedule a public hearing on this at the January meeting. So we're providing this for your comments and we can take your feedback and potentially integrate that into the amendment. We also have provided some clarification on parking standards related to attached housing and provided some clarification on porch standards and how that is measured.
Joe or Stephanie, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have one quick question. Jim, what would be, I'm trying to visualize what a fourplex even looks like.
In this instance, the way we've drafted the regulations, you will end up with kind of stacked units. So a duplex on the ground floor, right above that, another duplex. So there's a shared common wall in between all four of them, from the ground to the sky. Two units on bottom, two units on top. This would still require pedestrian entrance from the, to be oriented toward the primary street. The, the ground floor units would likely be accessed by a door that faces the side yard. The two upstairs units would share a, share an entrance. So you would go up a stairwell in those two units.
Okay, thank you.
Do we anticipate these will be rental units or will they be condominiums?
I believe these may be rentals.
Yeah, the, the plan for McCormick Village is that McCormick communities is actually going to develop the whole village area and this will be a rental community with a variety of housing types.
The other, and then Joe, I'll call on you, but the other thing that I look at when I look at these design types because, or code, because I don't visualize well as to what it's telling me. So I use the experts, you know, their knowledge that they've put this together correctly. However, I always look at it and see if I could build my house according to these, and I could not. So, and it has to do with windows. So I just want to make sure it, that if the developer or developer comes forth with a a different design and maybe didn't exactly meet the windows, that they could still, that there's room for an exception there.
Are you referring to the 8% transparency requirement?
No, I'm referring to the three and a half inch decorative something around it.
So that's a trim piece and that's really to distinguish the window?
No, I understand that and I get why you would like it there. I do not have any in my home and it would be difficult for me to put them on my home. So that's, that's the standard I'd look at when I look at these. And Nick knows, I, we've had this conversation before when we did the the design standards in the regular building code.
Fortunately though, this would not be applicable to existing structures, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
And I, and I appreciate that, but I just want to know if they came to us with something that did not meet that standard, would we entertain looking at it at all?
Oh, right now there is not an exception for that.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? Joe, that would be you. You're the only one left to say something.
Well, I don't, I don't really have anything left to say. I think you need a housing mix at McCormick. I think Port Orchard needs more, I think all of Kitsap needs more housing mixes, and if we don't have a fourplex standard, that's kind of challenging. That's on my mind. I don't know. I'm not sure about how much loosening of design standards I'm comfortable with, but I, I think we should schedule a public hearing on it. I'll study up.
Definitely, definitely. And I'm not suggesting we loosen design standards. They may come in with something that would even be better. But I understand why we want that because we don't want just a building with some windows in it. We want some something that makes it aesthetically pleasing for the neighbor. So Stephanie, do you have any exceptions to moving forward with a public hearing in our January meeting?
No, I do not.
Okay. With that, I think we're good to schedule the public hearing in January. And we're moving right along down our agenda. So we're, the discussion for the director's report.
Yeah, good evening. There are a couple of items I wanted to report on. First of all, from our comprehensive plan consultant, I wanted to, they've sent a proposed schedule for comprehensive plan next year. I wanted to let the Planning Commission know that we have a couple of workshops scheduled in February, March, and May. On the calendar, you have, first, we're going to start with a policy workshop in February, which will review the, the comprehensive plan policies and updates to those policies in our, our planning document. We'll have a land use strategies workshop in March and then we're going to do the subarea planning workshop at our May meeting is currently scheduled. So we're going to start off next year really diving into the comprehensive plan. We'll have a workshop on the entire comprehensive plan in, in June, and then we will begin working on the adoption process in the summer of next year, probably between August and November, and hopefully we can finish a little bit early, but we think that we, you know, we should be on track for getting this, getting the comprehensive plan recommended out of the Planning Commission to the City Council by the end of November so that the council cannot adopt by the December 31st deadline. Any questions about comp plan schedule?
Do you have dates on those months or just what's going to happen each month?
Well, those will be at our regularly scheduled meetings. So our March meeting, our, our February meeting, so, yes. So those are not extra meetings. Speaking of meetings, our, the observance of New Year's Day this year is going to be on Monday, the 2nd of January, which conflicts, or I'm sorry, it's to, actually, do we not? I okay, the first is a Monday, so we don't actually have a conflict on the second, except that it's the first day back.
Right.
Okay, so, so there was, we were having discussion about whether we needed to reschedule the Planning Commission meeting. I apologize. I thought it was actually falling on the holiday this year. And so being that we're going to have a couple of new planning commissioners starting, the thought was that we could postpone it and have a special meeting date, and we were looking at the 11th, the 17th, or the 18th as opposed to January 2nd, which would be our normal meeting date. I'm actually going to be out of town on both the 2nd and the 11th, and I'm happy to have Jim take these items forward without me. And, and that would also be the time for our new planning commissioners to get oriented and to meet, to meet everyone. And so I wanted to open it for discussion. We have one vacancy on the Planning Commission right now and Commissioner Bernstein's position expires, or his appointment expires at the end of this year, and so we'll be appointing a replacement for Commissioner Bernstein. And so the three of you along with Tyler and Annette will continue on in 2024.
Is there any preference for the date? It's my understanding that we could still meet on January 2nd, but I think that presents a conflict for Jim because I think Jim is on vacation the week before.
That's correct. So the, and, and putting together the packet and getting the packet out would be a challenge.
Getting the packet out would, would be onerous because he's not going to be here. So what dates are, with Nick being gone, both Jan- January 2nd and January 11th, it seems like the 17th or the 18th would be okay. But what is everyone's schedule like with, because we definitely want a quorum. We want to look good for our two new commissioners.
Well, I am amenable to either the 17th or the 18th. That's not a problem.
Okay.
I'd request the 17th, please.
Is the 17th, that that would be the Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nick, question for you. And speaking of comp plans, what is the status of the stormwater and watersheds comp plan?
The stormwater comp plan was adopted by the City Council at their last meeting on the 28th of January. I believe there was a presentation of the Planning Commission at the November meeting, if I'm not mistaken, October meeting. And the, the second part of that is the rates and capital facility charges, and that discussion, I believe, was held at the work-study meeting in November and is now going forward for discussion here in January. So on the 12th of January, I think, I think there will be a rates discussion for stormwater rates and capital facility charges.
Okay, so the Planning Commission saw the comp plan in October?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, okay. Don't you know, the one meeting I missed. Oh, weren't you here? Not for October, no, and I, but I still have all of my notes and edits and comments. I've, I've been waiting for the most updated version and I hadn't seen it.
Is it possible to forward that to Stephanie? Okay. The other thing, Stephanie, what I, I'm going to say, and I'm not being critical, I'm just saying what happened at that meeting is Jackie Brown gave the presentation. However, she was not the one who had had completed most of the work on that plan. It was an employee who had left, and so I would say our presentation was somewhat abbreviated. It wasn't quite as in-depth as if Zach had given it to us. Would you concur with that, Joe?
Uh, it seemed pretty in-depth to me, but
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm holding a hard copy of the last draft that I had received saying that it was tabled until May or June, and then I hadn't heard anything more. I, I didn't realize it was being looked at for October, but again, that was the meeting I missed.
Yeah, I don't think the, the version that you had changed at all. I think what we were working on when it was tabled was we were looking at alternatives for capital facility charges, and so there was a, a, there was a our, our growth assumptions that went into the original plan, we, we've seen kind of a boom over the last three years where permanent activity was higher than what was assumed in the plan. And so we, we wanted to look at if we had a higher growth assumption, what does that do to rates and capital facility charges? And then council was going to debate whether they wanted to use an alternative growth assumption in their rates discussion, or whether they felt like this, this period where we've had really, really rapid growth is just a, a short-term condition. So I, I don't know what the outcome of the discussion was at their November meeting. I wasn't present for that, but I believe they've given staff direction and Public Works is taking forward now the rates piece for discussion.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry I was not able to provide my comments. I was looking forward to it, but maybe in six years when it's revisited.
Does that complete your report, Nick?
That is everything. Right? Oh, right. Yeah, sorry. Jim reminded me. I had one more thing. Since it's the end of our, our last meeting of the year, we thought it would be a good idea to just recap everything that the Planning Commission has done this year. And I, I wanted to walk through all of your accomplishments. I think we had nine total meetings with, I think we had three months where we canceled meetings. But in that time, we completed the 2024, the initial comprehensive plan workshop, which was unfortunately not very well attended, but we did put out a lot of resources and we ended up doing a lot of that research, or the outreach online. We amended the comprehensive plan the first time to address the Meline Road zoning issues, and that was adopted by council. We amended the development, or we, we reviewed the development agreements chapter and recommended revisions to that to allow that sign, master sign programs be approved by development agreement. We completed work on the housing action plan that was ultimately adopted by the City Council. We reviewed the Planning Commission rules and updated those rules in an ordinance that was adopted by council. We amended our code concerning counter-complete application and what triggers counter-complete application in our review process. And so that was another ordinance that the Planning Commission reviewed and the council, the City Council adopted. This past fall, we were presented with the initial conditions report for our 2024 comprehensive plan update, which was a whole lot of data that is informing the, the comprehensive plan document that you'll be presented with later this, or in 2024. Jim brought forward an open space tax exemption request, which was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and which the City Council ultimately adopted. The, the Planning Commission also reviewed our temporary signs ordinance and has recommended changes to that code, and the City Council will be voting on that, it looks like, on December 12th. I, I did want to share with the Planning Commission that there was one change that came after the Planning Commission made its recommendation. I had an interesting thing happen when driving home during election season when all the temporary signs were out. And I noticed that my car has a, a, like a self-driving feature on it now, and it, it reads signs and does all kinds of fancy things. And it was showing the temporary signs on the, the side of the road in Tacoma as being traffic cones. And so it was, they were confusing the system and making it think it was seeing something that it wasn't. And so I shared that with, with our team and we had some discussions and talked about the need to actually set temporary signs back from the fog line or where there is no fog line from the curb line. And so we, the City Council has recommended that the ordinance that go forward on the 12th, they're going to hold a second public hearing on it because there were changes, but it will have an additional setback from the travel lane to make sure that those things aren't right out in traffic where they could potentially interfere with car radar systems or camera systems that are trying to read the, the road. And so that will be an additional layer of, of rules concerning temporary signs. The final item that was reviewed, the comprehensive plan amendment, there was a second amendment considered in 2023 where the Transportation Improvement Program and the Capital Facilities Plan were updated to go forward with the City Council's budget adoption, and that was approved here on the 28th. So quite a bit of work completed in, in just nine meetings last year. And as, as you heard in our schedule, 2024 will be a heavy lift as we try to wrap up the comprehensive plan update in, in the next year. And so that definitely concludes my director's reports. I don't think I forgot anything else.
Is there anything else for the good of the commission?
Well, I, I will share that we Jim, Jim should just run these meetings. I'll, I'll stop coming. We have a new planner starting on next, a week from tomorrow. Sean Raja from, he's moving out here from Florida this week, but he has a Masters in Public Administration, a Masters in Urban Planning and is really eager to get to work in Port Orchard, and so we look forward to welcoming, welcoming him. And you will probably see him at the January Planning Commission meeting.
He's going to the other side of the country.
Yes, he, he's not a fan of the climate in Florida.
And are you going to introduce Paul as your intern?
I guess, is this your first meeting on this side of the table?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, that's right. We canceled the November meeting. So yeah, as you probably noticed, Paul is not sitting up there with you anymore, and that is because we had a couple of openings in the Planning Department and Paul actually applied for the assistant planner job. And while we, we did not hire him for the assistant planner position, we were impressed with his work on the Planning Commission and also his work helping with the public outreach at the farmer's market and thought that he would make a good intern. And so he lives three doors down from the Planning Department and he won't miss work on snow days and he's, he's learning the basics of planning right now and is, is pitching in while we're shorthanded. And so I think the internship, did we, is it through end of June or?
Oh, yeah, end of May, June sometime.
End of May or June. So, so he is, he is working 30 or 40 hours a week depending on the week now.
Congratulations, Paul.
Thank you. Way to go, Paul.
That's cool. Is there anything else? Joe or Stephanie, do you have anything else?
I have nothing further.
Well, I'm going to wish everybody the warmest holiday, happy seasons, happy holiday seasons.
Good call, Joe, good call.
And thanks to my fellow commissioners and ex-commissioners, Paul, for their volunteerism this year, and thanks to the team at these, I, I want to call you DCD. Is that fair, Nick? It's not fair, is it?
No, that's fair.
Okay, so the team at DCD, you know, always, please always let us know how we can be supportive of you. You do a great job. Thanks for serving our city. Thanks. That's it. Happy holidays. Thanks for a good job chairing that.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to a couple of new commissioners. Yeah, and I'm looking forward to a couple of new commissioners next year. Um, they're going to be right in the fire, working on the Comprehensive Plan, because it looks like the first six months, we're going to have um, a lot of information coming to us. Appreciate that. And to echo Joe, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season, and we will see you on January 17th. Thank you.
Sounds good. Happy New Year, everyone.